All right, let's call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. You've received the minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a hearing today for Boyle County Industrial Foundation and Seeing Hearts, who are proposing a transitional home. They've applied for a conditional use permit on a property containing approximately 10.19 acres located at 3288 Lebanon Road, Danville, Kentucky. The property is zoned agricultural, AR1, and Director Hunter will open with remarks.
Thank you, guys. You heard our chair pretty much lay out some of those details there. And this is all in your packet, but it's also on the slide for the folks here, and there's some photos we'll walk you through. But as you heard, we had an application filed April 25th, 2019, and the property owner is actually the Boyle County Industrial Foundation, and it's the little green sliver there in the second that says AR1. And as you all know, out there on Lebanon Road, this is the industrial park that's all shown in that red zoning color there. And Industrial Foundation, as you all know, has been kind of the main developer out in that area, and they still own that piece of property, and they're basically getting what the idea is to kind of do a transitional use here that would be there for maybe a few years, maybe a lot of years, until such time Industrial Foundation needs that property to pull into maybe another development project of an industrial nature, then at that point they potentially would rezone it to the industrial category and go that way. So again, short term, this is about putting the use on the property under conditional use in the ag district. Until such time, the property is needed for other development options. Again, you heard its location is 3288 Lebanon Road, it's zoned AR1, our ag district. It's 10.190 acres, and the applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for a group living facility, and in their term, a transition home in the AR1 district. So again, that's a zoomed-in piece of the property, and you don't see much because of the tree line, so we went out and took some other photos. This is what the applicants turned in as far as their plan, and again, it's a little generic, and we just basically had them label that aerial on what's residential building one, residential building two, training room, barn workshop, driveway, et cetera. And again, you don't see a lot of detail in the buildings and parking, so we went out and took some other photos, and I'll show you, and then the applicant may walk through some of those same photos, and then I'll go through the report real quick, just get you acclimated. This is looking into the property from Lebanon Road. Again, heavily tree-covered fence, you really don't see what's up on that farm from the street side. Then this is looking west, down the road towards industrial park, and again, you can see across the road, there's no neighbor directly across the road, it's mostly vacant land, and there's some residences further up the road past the industrial park, and this would be looking east, coming back towards town, up the road.
There's someone living across the road.
Okay. Well, there's a gentleman living across the road. There's not a house that I saw directly across the road, right within the first. It's up on the hill, and we'll let the neighbors tell you where they're at. But in general, I think what we're showing is, as opposed to residences right adjacent, these are bigger farm tracts, and you can see it from that first picture there. I mean, you can see the parcels real nice and clean, they're bigger tracts, as opposed to the smaller tracts are this way and this way. These are larger tracts of land than we looked at before. And that's another item. As you guys remember, this applicant came before you guys several months ago, if not late last summer, last fall, with a proposal that was in the city for a transition home. That application failed for some different reasons, and the applicant went back and started looking around town for another site, and another site brought some additional challenges, and I think they tried to address that with their conditions, and I'll walk you through that in just a second. So I want to point out these photos here, what you're looking at. Some of these photos came off the PVA's website, and I think it was just to show the advantage of these, where these photos were taken, like the PVA does a lot of times, when the trees don't have leaves on them. You know, you want to get good aerials on like our map in the PVA when you don't see tree cover, so you can see things from two-dimensional, but then these are pictures of the property several years ago that are off the PVA site. And then the applicant brought us some photos in more of the current condition, and we have some other photos, just kind of show you the kind of, they're really before and today, just to give you an idea of how the property lies if you didn't go up into the property. This is one of the residential buildings, again, off the PVA's website several years ago. This is what the building looks like today in this type of condition, and the applicants can get up here and tell you kind of what the game plan is to get this thing back into shape. Again, various buildings on the property before. This is another building they intend to use that would be potentially a community's room and the living quarters for the resident advisor. Again, before and kind of after photos here, just shows again what the property's kind of looks like in the current condition. Again, another building shot there and as it is today. And a barns or garage on that. Workshop there. So we'll go back to the staff report, and I'll finish up my stuff, and then the applicant may work through those photos if they want to, and we'll just look at it from the zoning aspect. So to start on page two of the staff report, this application obviously starts with the zoning ordinance, which is Article 5, Section 521, Article 2, Section 2.2. And that outlines our agricultural district on page two and three, and what you can do in the ag district, which is typically live there, farm, et cetera. And then, as you guys are aware, on page three, there's some kind of things you can do by conditional use, which means you need to get a conditional use permit before you can do those things on the property. And one of those under Item 4 talks about, as you guys have seen before, hospitals, nursing homes, convalescent homes, rest homes, orphanages, and rehabilitation homes. There's not a technical term in our book for transition home, so the closest thing would be a rehabilitation home, and then number 11 down there is any other use that's determined by you guys to be of the same general character. That's a tricky number 11, because that one was sort of amended, it's kind of in the city, kind of in the county, not in the city, so that other category still exists, and it's kind of a catch-all, but it's tricky, as our attorneys pointed out to me, because really, you know, that wording's going to go away with the next rewrite, because to make an assumption that anything can go anywhere, as long as they get a CUP, is really not direct authority under the statute. That number 11 seems to say that, you know, you could put a body shop in a residential zone if it fits. Well, actually, the CUPs that we have are really 1 through 10, and that 11's a catch-all, and that was just old language in the book. The way we look at it is the transition home is a unique kind of use, but it fits a brand-new definition we just put forward, which is right there below in Section 2.2. We no longer have a term for all these different kinds of halfway house, rehabilitation center, and drug and alcohol treatment. We now have one definition of what all those things are, and they are simply group living. And group living can be a lot of different things, like a transition home, like a fraternity, like a sorority, like a halfway house, but the term now for us is the industry term, which is group living, and that term is now defined, and that is in the current zoning ordinance as of May the 1st, the residential occupancy of a structure by a group of people who do not meet the definition of a household or family. So it's really simple. You're just not a family under our definition, you're not a household. You're something else, and you're a group of people who share a common eating and living area. The residents may receive care, may not receive care, training or treatment, as long as the caregivers also reside at the site. That is as simple as it gets now for group living, and that term catches all these other things, however you want to describe yourself, transition home, halfway house, residential treatment, fraternity, sorority, convalescent, juvenile detention, whatever your term is, to us, it's group living. It's just not a family, it's not a household under our definition. So that's the use that we are approving, group living, transition home in the ag district under Category 4 or 11, however you guys see it. Page four of the staff report, pretty typical stuff you guys are familiar with. Article 3, Section 387 says you guys can add conditions. As a board, you have that authority. The applicant has put forward 10 conditions in a short narrative. I won't read the narrative, I'll read you the conditions. You guys have the authority to add other conditions, tweak those conditions, strike some of those if you choose so. But here's the 10 conditions the applicant has put forward to tie in with this property. And of course, as you all know, those would be recorded with the property if this was approved, put in the courthouse, and they'd be bound by these conditions, and they'd also have to be enforced by the planning commission. They're enforceable by us when they're approved conditions. And I will mention that the first draft of the conditions, we tweaked slightly with the applicant, because some of those would be tough for us to enforce. There were more kind of house rules items in the first draft of these, and we didn't feel it was appropriate to the planning commission as, you know, we can enforce parking and signs and uses and number of bodies, that kind of thing, but some of these things, when they get down to house rules, would be a little tricky for us to enforce, but some of these conditions were necessary. The applicant thought, because of the last hearing, that there's just some things that need to be in here to make some assurance on how the property's going to function and operate into the future. So these are the 10 conditions that the staff and the applicant worked through to get them to this point. The first one says that they're basically going to have a resident advisor to monitor the residents during non-office hours and weekends. Number two says residents are prohibited from leaving the property, shuttle vans used for residents' transportation needs, authorized residents may be granted use of personal vehicles. Three says no sexual offenders, arsonists, or murders omitted. Four is kind of gives us a scale, it says a maximum of eight residents plus a resident advisor. Five deals with a 24/7 supervisory system that'll be utilized for the RA, dealing with entrances and exits and video surveillance, sign-in sheets, et cetera. Six is kind of a big deal. This property's currently on a septic system. We both, applicant and myself, have talked to the health department. It will be a requirement to connect to public sanitary sewer. We can't have a group living facility on a septic system or this septic system. So six says public sanitary sewer connection is required prior to occupancy. So that burden's going on the property owner or the applicant or some combination, but they can't move into the property and start their group living activity until they are on public sanitary sewer. Now, where that's going to happen, front, back, I think the intention is it might go to the rear, that's all on the applicant and the property owner to work out, but they can't start the activity until that condition is satisfied. Number seven is another one similar. It says a change of use permit is required to be obtained by Seeing Hearts prior to occupancy. There's some building code issues that need to be addressed, and we have a change of use, so we're taking basically a single-family dwelling and converting it to a group living. A change of use permit is required by the planning commission and the building inspector. So there's two change of use permits that have to be obtained. Ours is going to be pretty simple. We're going to be making sure all the conditions are satisfied, the parking's in place, we only have eight people going in, not 12 or something of that nature. But the building inspector is another issue. He has some jurisdiction on lots of different things when you have a group living facility related to fire code issues, you know, maybe fire extinguishers, exit signs, whatnot. They'll have to visit with the building inspector and get his change of use permit and get all of his requirements satisfied before they can convert this dwelling from a single-family dwelling to basically a group living facility. He's also indicated if one of those rooms is a meeting room or meeting space, there's other building code issues that are related to occupancy loads of meeting space. So that's kind of on them. Again, to not overcomplicate this, we just said you need a change of use permit before you move in, and that would be through the planning commission and through the building department, and whatever comes with that is what they'll have to do. The meeting space may be tricky, because that triggers another higher level of fire code issues that don't exist for a single-family dwelling or a multifamily dwelling. And that's number seven. Eight deals with signage, just says if there is any signs, it'll comply with the zoning ordinance. Nine deals with parking, that was probably our main concern. If we're going to have nine folks on this property, potentially visitors and meetings, how are we going to handle parking? There's a lot of pavement back there, but it's mostly travel ways and access to different buildings, and we think physically there's enough parking. It may not be traditional parking with line spaces that you pull in, but there's plenty enough stacking in there to get 12 cars, and that's what they're committing to, that there'd be at least 12 parking spaces provided for this use. And then 10 just says if the property's ever sold or Seeing Hearts isn't involved, this conditional use permit becomes null and void. So it sort of sunsets on out. As you know, conditional use permits run with the land, so if you get a conditional use permit for a daycare, it's on that property unless we enact a condition that says it's only there for a year or two years or five years, or only for this owner or only for this business entity. That's a sunset clause. We've got a lot of conditional uses that do that, so it said, "These guys can do this, but if they were to sell the property or leave, the next buyer or something couldn't do the same thing without coming back before you guys." So those are the 10 conditions. The bottom of page four, in Article 3.84, deal with your review criteria. That's A through I. You guys are familiar with what you guys are allowed to sort of look at. Again, these are our kind of zoning land use type things. And then Section 385 are the required findings that you have to make to approve a conditional use permit. And then your staff report on the very last page is the up or down kind of canned motion. I want to point out on that motion, the conditions aren't stated. There's a spot, for example, for an approval motion, where you state the conditions, and right now, there's 10 conditions. If you were to add two more or delete one, I think we need to be very clear, and our attorney can help us with this, that the motions need to clearly reflect what conditions we end up as a final product. I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys might have for the staff. Our attorney's here, if you've got any questions for him, I think there's several folks who want to testify in front of you guys, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you all may have for us.
No, just go.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hunter. I'm Matthew Walter, counsel for the Industrial Foundation. I think most of you recall from last summer what Mr. Wilkinson is trying to accomplish here. I want to hammer down on some of the differences between this application and where we were last summer. Number one, location. Clearly, this isn't in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The message to Mr. Wilkinson last time was somewhat, as we interpreted it, find a different location and come back to us. We think this is a good idea, and that's what he's done. We've also got a lease with the Industrial Foundation here, so in addition to whatever conditions you may impose on this, there's going to be conditions in a lease. There's an extra layer of oversight here that would hopefully ease the public's mind with regard to the individuals that would be in this transitional home. The Industrial Foundation and Andrew sought out input from neighbors this go-around. They had a great meeting last month, concerns were expressed, hopefully some fears were alleviated, but the neighbors, the community out there around this location has been involved in the discussion, and I know the Industrial Foundation and Andrew really appreciate that. This go-around, the Boyle County Detention Center is partnering with Andrew. They are in the process of getting a kind of case specialist to identify men in the detention center that will soon be serving out their sentence that would be good for this type of program. They're going to keep an eye on men that have worked towards their GED, that have taken substance abuse programs, that have done things to better themselves, to correctly identify applicants for this transitional home. I think that's a huge component of this. Our jailer, Brian Walford, has been extremely helpful through this process. He's got a ton of great ideas, and that partnership is going to not only ensure success for these individuals, but also, again, hopefully get the right people there to ease the public concerns. Lastly, and most importantly, and I will keep this brief, because I know a lot of people may want to be heard, the last 10 months have given Andrew an opportunity to, number one, make contacts with other folks who have run these kind of homes in other communities. He's been able to hammer down on policies, procedures, safety issues, transportation. I think Andrew would admit that last go-around, he wasn't quite ready to do this 100 percent. He was in thought and spirit, but maybe didn't have all the pieces together, and he does now. So with that, I will turn it over to Andrew, if you want to speak, give a little more detail on the program, and obviously, you all feel free to interrupt with questions for any of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, so if you would, go ahead, come on up, but if you would state your name and address for documentation, please.
Yes, I'm Andrew Wilkinson. My address is 528 North Maple Avenue here in Danville, Kentucky.
And then if you would raise your right hand, and do you swear that the words you're going to share with us today are the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, nice to see everybody again. I don't think we're here today to discuss the need for an organization like ours in our community. I think everyone understands the need. I would like to touch a little bit on, in my remarks, how we're going to do this. So we're working with the Boyle County Detention Center, and Mr. Brian Walford, our jailer, Captain Danny Sally, and Tanith Wilson, who's the substance abuse prevention director down in the jail. We're not going to stand, just because someone is being released from jail doesn't mean that they are a proper fit for our home, and we're not going to stand there trying to catch them as they come out the door, like a brown bear in a salmon stream, just trying to grab them as they come out. We are going in. We are intentionally and prayerfully seeking out men that we believe can benefit from our program. Now, what does that look like? We're looking for men that have illustrated accountability for their crimes, they know what they did was wrong, and they're trying to change their lives. They have illustrated a sincere desire to change their lives. How do we know this? We look at their activity during their incarceration. We look at how they've taken advantage of the resources available to them during their incarceration. Were they involved in the SAP program, the substance abuse prevention? Were they involved in faith-based studies, Celebrate Recovery, vocational training, GED, good behavior, attitude? The list goes on and on and on. So what we do is we come in, we identify men that are going to be released in the near future, in several weeks or in months, and through a lengthy interview and application process, I conduct a one-on-one personal interview. However, I'm not a clinician, but we do have access to professional clinicians now and mental health professionals that can do two things for us. They look, first of all, we've agreed to not accept any arsonists, no sex offenders, and nobody that's been convicted of homicide or manslaughter. So we determine, do these men need residential addiction treatment? Do they have drug and alcohol addiction problems that they require residential addiction treatment? If so, they will not be admitted to our program. We look at them in a mental health evaluation. Do they have long history of violent behavior? Do they need deep psychological intervention? Do they need medical help for the problems that they're experiencing? If they do, they will not be admitted into the Seeing Hearts reentry home out on Lebanon Road. Just as important, we do not want men that are not serious about changing their lives, and they're there, the people that have not accepted accountability for their crimes, they're not sorry for what they did, and chances are, they probably will continue in some criminal activity. We're not interested in them. We don't want to waste their time, and we don't want them to waste our time. Just on the other side of the pendulum, we need to take their responsibility very seriously. If men need more than what we're capable of providing them, out of fairness to them and to the community, they will not be admitted into Seeing Hearts home. We are basically looking for middle-of-the-road men that know what they did was wrong, they've gotten off track in life, and when you get off track in life to the point where you go to jail and/or prison, there's been a lot of damage done, self-inflicted, I get it, but they need help. They need guidance, they need structure, they need accountability in their lives going forward to put those pieces back together, and they certainly can become tax-paying, productive members of our society, and Seeing Hearts is going to help them become this. I know we went through some of the pictures here. Steve, if you want to go through some of them again, or how did I do that?
You see the little remote-looking thing there?
Is there?
See that, Andrew? Little remote. Side arrows.
Okay, just click back and forth. With that said, is there any questions that come to mind right now that I can address before we get into the pictures?
I want to ask counsel, what's the protocol for questions from residents for the applicants? Is that possible or no?
If there are audience questions, the appropriate time for that is when you've opened the public hearing up to other people. At that point, audience members can direct their question to the board, who can then point to applicant counsel, whoever can answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is the first time I've ever used this, forgive me if I. I need one of these at home. Okay, here's the front entrance, the front drive going up to the property where the two residences are, I guess I should say the two structures. Both of them are approximately 24, 2,500 square feet, and this is towards the end of the front drive, coming up to a circle aroundabout. On the right side of this photo is the structure, again, same shot, just a little bit of a different angle coming up to the roundabout. On the right side there is the dwelling that we will house the eight men in. They will have their personal space, they will have their beds, they will have their wardrobes and their chests. It has a full-service kitchen, two full baths, a family room, and a dining room. And there will be video surveillance on two entrances and exits in this structure. This is, again, another shot, obviously in the wintertime of the same. This is the residential building where we'll put the eight men. Again, same, same. You can see it's overgrown right now, but there's a courtyard. To the left of the photograph, all the overgrown brush here can be cleaned away very nicely. It's going to be a little bit of a project, but very manageable, and there's a courtyard with bricks between the two houses. This is the back of the residential house that we've been looking at. Same. Okay, now, this is the community center. The previous owners, the gentleman had a train hobby. I think everyone can remember, a big red caboose that was sitting up there. I guess it was much more than a hobby. This was his hobby house, and it's not fitted out, it's not fit out like the other structure. Basically, it has two very large rooms on the bottom, on the ground floor, one you walk into right here, which will be our conference room, where we will have all of our community activity, we will have our life change, life management and discipline curriculums, our Celebrate Recovery, which is a Christ-centered 12-step program for Hertz habits and hangups. We will have guest speakers, we will have Bible study, we can have Family Night for loved ones and friends to come gauge their progress as we go forward. Every 30 days, we can invite the family in and let them be a part of the lives that are being transformed. And on the right side is a large concrete floor, the two windows with the green shutters on the far-right bottom floor is a recreation room, where we can put in things like weights or a ping-pong table or a billiard table or foosball or whatever that we can find on a donated basis for the men to relax and have fun together and have some recreation time. The resident advisor will live on the top floor, up here, it's a loft, with the two windows and the green shutters on the right side to the upper right. windows and the green shutters on the right side to the upper right. This is where our monitor will live. And downstairs, just below his loft, he has a toilet, a kitchenette, and we will be able to put in a simple molded shower for him to have his own facilities there, so he won't have to walk across the courtyard to use the men's facilities in the other home. This, am I going the wrong way, Steve?
You're going down, now you're going the wrong way.
Now I'm going the wrong way. I'm getting to the most, for some reason, this is the most exciting part to me. If all of you can remember, 13 years ago, I endured many of the struggles that these men will be facing. And when I see the possibilities of what this property can be, I truly become excited. Down here, to the, on the left of the photograph, is a thousand-square-foot electricity-powered gas furnace workshop. It's got hard-packed dirt flooring, and already a woodworking table with a motor on it where somebody before had used it to make things like the legs for tables and chairs and things like this. I find it incredible that these possibilities are so readily available for us. We can find woodworkers, retired woodworkers in the community, retired leather toolers in the community, perhaps they're widowers, and they have time on their hands, and they're very involved in the churches, in their faith life, and they want to be a part of something good happening in the community and addressing a need. We can bring them in this space right here, and the men can learn how to create things with their own hands. Perhaps we could work our way up to creating a source of revenue, and going around town and selling simple chairs, or selling simple park benches to banks and businesses around town, and build up their self-esteem, and build up their confidence, and teach them how to do things with their hands. Along with the potential for a garden, this 10 acres gives us space to plant perhaps a half-acre garden, very simple, some corn, some tomatoes, some cucumber. Don't get too extended, we probably won't start with cilantro and rosemary, but we'll start with things that are easy to grow, and teach these men how to plant, how to cultivate, how to harvest. Not only can that be an additional source of revenue, but it's good for them, too. It builds confidence, self-esteem, and they're personally invested in what goes on at this property. So... I have no idea what this was. Mr. Albright, do you know what this was at some point in the past?
It might have been a house, a room for grandchildren.
Ah, okay. It does obviously have electricity power. It's behind the two homes, about 100 yards. It's very cute, aesthetically it looks great. Perhaps it could be a tool shed for us, a very fancy tool shed. Like I said, obviously it has electricity power. As of right now, we have no plans for it, other than it's a nice piece of the property that we can look out at for therapeutic reasons. Here's the workshop, again, which I get very excited about. Our parking that we mentioned in the conditional uses would be running along the left side of this photo here where the leaves are in the grass. We'll flatten that out and lay some gravel down for up to 12 spaces. If need be, we can go across the pavement there to the right and create an additional few spaces, if it comes to that point in the future, but there's more than enough space here on the left side of the photo for the 12 cars that we listed in the application. Again, the workshop. Here is a better shot of our parking. It's a little bit of a dog leg coming around there, so we'll start down here at the bottom left and flatten that out, cut the grass back, lay some gravel, and it'll come around the curve there, running up to the workshop. That will be our gravel parking spaces. I don't know if anyone can tell, plenty of room for 12 automobiles. And the gravel to the, in the middle-left of the photo here is where the caboose was. This is a perfect spot to put some picnic tables out and some patio furniture for the men when they might have some relaxation time and downtime at the property to sit outside and enjoy the sun. They certainly would appreciate that, as opposed to where they had been. Workshop, so... I believe, as far as my comments go, I've touched on everything that I wanted to share, and I'm happy to take questions from anyone, or I'm not sure about the rules, if the gentleman would like to speak, or ask a question, or...
I'll open the floor to the public, first in favor and then opposed in a moment. Are there questions for Andrew, right?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I don't know if this is on, can you hear me? Who's covering the cost for these improvements, Andrew?
We have been extremely blessed that we have two private individuals that are extremely interested in seeing this ministry succeed. Along with that, we have a fantastic board with two senior pastors sitting on our board that have committed their churches, they're very established churches here in the area. They have committed corporate support for what it is that we're doing, and we have another church in Danville that is also on board corporately to support the ministry. So we have, will there be, we are a startup nonprofit. Will there be those moments where things are extremely tight, and we have to control costs down to the penny? Yes, yes, absolutely. This is real life, this is how businesses work, profit or not for profit. However, I think 10 months after our initial meeting, and I have been drawing administrative pay since that time, I think it, in my opinion, it's clear that support for this ministry exists, and there are people in this community that have come forward and have illustrated their willingness to support it. Grants are not really available to us at this moment because we're a startup. There might be some out there, and one of the things that I've learned in this process is that you have to go find them. There's no real list of resources for grants available to a startup nonprofit. What needs to be done is the legwork and investigating, investigation work by me through friends like Ms. Jennifer Parton here, who has become my dear friend in the Lord, and I appreciate her so much. She runs Prodigal Ministries in Louisville, Kentucky. They've been doing this since the early 90s, and they have two homes for men in downtown Louisville, and one home for women, reentry homes in Oldham County. She has been through all of the searches, all of the investigating, all of the community concerns, all of the birthing pains, all of the setting up schedules, and how they maintain the residences. She's been through all of this, and she has stepped forward on an advisory and council basis, and is there for us as we embark on this journey. To get back to the original question, there are two individuals will not let this ministry fail. Three corporate, three churches in our city, in our community, have come forward on a corporate level to support this ministry. We know what our costs are to get through the initial cleanup. We have identified everything, I believe, down to the dollar, and it's a very manageable figure. One of our members on our board, Cho Sargent, he's a Junction City First Baptist, the senior pastor, he also works at Campbellsville University. This is one of the things, of the blessings that are surrounding our startup effort here. He's given me access to two graduate students that he has at Campbellsville University in the media production department. And we have shot a fundraising video out of the property that we will send out to churches when I can go and speak in churches and raise support, which will be our first prong of attack in the community. We will go into the churches, into the faith-based community, where people understand that lives can be transformed. And that's going to be our first level of attack in terms of fundraising, but this has all been pro bono. And there's a million different blessings I could list at right now, where people have made resources and time and things available to us to take on the, not only the initial costs, which will be, I'll go ahead and throw the number out there, around 15, between $15,000 and $17,500, and the operating cost going forward of an annual budget of, I believe, at this point, without having any history to look at, will be about $70,000.
Question, does that $15,000 include the sewer?
Yes.
Connection?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Given the types of people that you have, you're weeding out sex offenders, murderers, arsonists, so there may be drug offenders, do you have means of security in place to assure that there won't be drug use at the facility?
I just had a wonderful conversation with a lady named Missy Galloway at Premier Integrity Solutions, and she has offered her assistance in our ability. First of all, there will be random drug testing, and there will be random alcohol testing. There's a new device out called the ACO2. You heard about this, Brian? No? Anyway, it's an alcohol testing device. On release, through the drug and alcohol evaluation and the mental health assessment, if it is determined professionally, not by me, professionally, that they need, on paper, that they need residential addiction treatment, they will not be admitted to our program. Now, that's not to say that, I believe the figure is 80% of men and women in incarceration have some type of struggle with addiction, alcohol, or drugs, or some type of addiction in their life. It is that prevalent. So, it's very conceivable that some of them will be IOP patients here in town at our wonderful organizations that we have. Roger Fox runs the Shepherd's House over here, Isaiah House has their new IOP program, bluegrass.org. So, there's a healthy amount of programs on the outpatient side of things that we can direct them to for the resources that they need for ongoing support with their addiction struggles. Now, some of them will be on parole, there will be parole officers involved, so we will do random drug testing, I'm sure at their places of employment where people hire them, there will also be drug testing, and anytime there is any type of violation, parole officers will be immediately brought into the situation. If someone, if somebody at work and their employer calls and says, hey, they failed a drug test, that structure exists for us. There will be people looking all along the way, not just us on a random drug test or an alcohol screen there in the home, but we have parole officers, we have, we have employment people where they work. So there will be a constant safety net and looking to make sure that they are clean, that they are clean and sober.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's a beautiful piece of property, I would like to have lived there at some point.
That's what my wife said.
However, it looks pretty inhabitable to me right now, and I'm curious, what are just the basics it's going to take to get that place so you can have people living there?
Okay.
And what is the timeframe?
Okay. It does look bad, because it's the end of May or the middle of May, and the growth is very green and thick. Actually, it's a very manageable process, but I'll start with the inside of the dwellings. They're in remarkably good shape. There was some water damage a year or two ago that the Industrial Foundation addressed. They had to take up some flooring, and they fixed the issue itself, but we've got about 850 square foot of composite flooring that we're going to need to lay down, which we've already run the costs, and we're actually confident that we can get this material donated. And there's about 450 square foot of snap floating floor that goes over in the hard, the level concrete in the family room. There's a three-foot storm door that needs to be installed, and there's a new toilet that needs to be bought. However, other than that, and I'm not naive enough to stand up here and say that that's it, and there won't ever be any issues, we've gone through it, we've scoured through it, we've looked at it. They are in remarkably good shape on the inside. The Industrial Foundation has maintained them to the point where if someone like us wanted to come in, that we could get them together in decent shape, and I think we're looking at a cleanup effort, the materials we need, and being able to open our doors, I think we're looking at a 60 to 90-day proposition, late summer or early fall, we'll be able to open the doors and welcome our first men into the program. Very important point, we've agreed not to house more than eight. There's no rule anywhere that says we have to start off with eight. I believe I'm the right person for this job. I understand these men. This is very personal to me, but I'm not going to stand up here and pretend like that I've been doing this for 20 years. So we can start with half that number. We can identify the ones in the jail that we believe are not the hardest cases. We can start with men that just need a little guidance, and encouragement, and support as they put piece after piece, they're putting money in their bank accounts, starting a checking account, learning how to interview for a job, getting that first job, maybe saving up enough money to buy a simple car, just piece after piece after piece. They just need someone there to walk with them along the way, and to be there with them through the discouraging times, because life is full of discouraging times for all of us. But we don't have to start with eight, we don't have to pack it jam-full. We can start with a smaller number, and actually, I believe that's the responsible way to do it, and work up to getting our footing on scheduling, and what nights are best for Family Night, and what nights have we identified are the best to allow them to work shifts in factories. Is that the first shift and the third shift? Don't let them work the second shift, because we need evening time to be together in our community center. So as we work through these operational, very normal setup items, we don't have to bring eight in, we can start with half that number, and I'm happy to do so.
I have a follow-up question. I did get into the one building that was open.
The commu, the home, or the...
No, the home.
Yeah.
I didn't even tell.
Yeah.
I do have a question about, have you had it inspected for mold?
No, we have not had a mold inspection. We've been in there with electricity workers, gas workers, and a handyman that knows how to fare it out, all types of items, and we haven't seen any mold at this point, but I'm sure that that, a mold inspection is probably a health department issue, isn't it? I mean—
I would think so.
Well, we're cer—
Health problems.
Everyone involved at this point knows that we're going to have to go through, for instance, we're going to have to have the propane tanks inspected. I know that. We've already run the costs on having both of those tanks inspected, we believe we're going to have to have two new valves put on, they're 1,000 pounds apiece, so we know how much gas we're going to have to put in them. So certainly, the mold inspection is not some surprise for us, this is absolutely, we can have that done, and see what...
I want to make a comment, so I can quick up on that, because again, I think one of those conditions on that change of use permit is where a lot of this is going to come in. I know just enough about the building code to be dangerous, but the building inspector's in our office now, and Andrew's been in, and he'll talk to him some more. For example, like that door right there, self-closing mechanism, when you have a group living facility, the building code will address things like fireproof doors, so some of their initial costs might have to include some other items that the building inspector will probably trigger through that change of use. For example, 30-minute fireproof doors, that's a different style of door than you buy at Lowe's, than you would normally put in your house, self-closing, and things that keep doors, to close bedroom doors. There's things in the building code when you go from a single-family dwelling to a group living, exit signs, fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, there's building code issues, there's fire code issues, there may even be some health department issues. They'll have to go through all of those protocols to get that change of use permit, and that's what, that's the safety net we feel we put in, at least on the building code side, when we go from single-family dwelling to a multifamily or group living, there's a whole set of items in the code that this applicant will have to address when it comes to fire safety. And again, they may have to replace all the bedroom doors with 30-minute rated doors. The building inspector will communicate to them as they move through that permit process. On the other side of that, we'll be looking at the zoning, and there'll be some minor things we'll address through our change of use permit, but there'll be some things. Now, the most daunting part I see is this meeting room facility. That is the plan today, but that's when things get really complicated in the building code. Moving eight bodies, or 10 bodies, or 15 bodies in a multifamily setting or group living is not going to be that complicated in that house, or for the resident advisor to meet the building code and fire code, it's going to cost a few bucks, and you're going to have to outfit some things that you typically don't do in a house. The meeting space is a whole nother level that, depending if there's food prep, health department, and how many bodies, I mean, worst-case scenario, may have to be sprinkled. The fire code will be tricky, depending on how many bodies they intend to put in a visitor situation or meeting situation, then you're moving— Then you're moving into places of assembly in the building code. And again, I'm not an expert at that, but if that's what they intend to do with building two, the building inspector would give them guidance on exactly what modifications they'd have to make to, for example, put twenty bodies in that hobby building. And that's, we're catching that with that condition that says change of use permits required. All of that will be, have to be satisfied before they can move in. The neat thing about this is, is they could probably break that into phases and do the residential building first, for example, so they could get some folks in there. And then the other building may, if it needs more accommodations, it could be two kind of reviews if it needs to be that way. So, again, it's a simple sentence, I think, that catches all those kind of what-ifs. And it's theirs to sort of figure out and walk through as they get that change of use permit.
Two questions, Will, sir.
Yes, sir.
A general one and a specific one. Generally, have you communicated with the Cabinet for Health and Human Services? And are there applications or certifications that your organization will need to meet at the state level?
There are no guidelines, no, for transitional housing operation in the state of Kentucky. They are being created. And at such time, we will be more than happy to abide by whatever the guidelines are for in the state of Kentucky. Tennessee does have guidelines, and we used them as a model in our negotiations with the Industrial Foundation. In the absence of our own in Kentucky, we went to Tennessee. They have them, and we use them in terms of our negotiating and what we would abide by.
Good. And detailed question. In the, in the conditions, you mentioned residents prohibited from leaving the property.
Yes.
But then earlier you spoke about residents being employed off-site.
That's-
How do we manage this?
They're not prohibited, they're not prohibited from leaving the property. They're prohibited from leaving the property on foot. Obviously, they're going to engage in the community. Obviously, they're going to engage in the workforce. This is a part of getting back into the game of life and being productive members of society. So, we have, we will have a shuttle van that we will use for our transportation needs. Some of them, I'm certain the majority of them won't. Some of them might have their own automobile. And we're certainly not gonna penalize them if they're that much farther in the game. If they have access to a car, then that will be, they will be allowed to use that, but only for them. This won't be a ride-sharing with the other residents. It will be for their use only. Great part about this is I've talked with the director of routing for Dan Tran. His name is Taylor Veach. Taylor is very supportive of our efforts here. They will deviate from their routing normally for up to half a mile. The location is point eight-nine miles from the showroom, which is where they keep their shuttles. They are okay with extending that half-mile limit out to point eight-nine to pick up our men as they need transportation assistance throughout the course of everyday life. So, that should read prohibited from leaving the property. The point of that condition was to let people know that they're not gonna be walking up and down Lebanon Road. That's a non-starter, and that will not be allowed. They are not allowed to ride their bicycle up and down Lebanon Road. They're not allowed to walk up and down Lebanon Road appearing like they're hitchhiking and things like this. We understand that some of this is sensitive to people in the community, and they have concerns, although they're supportive generally. We know that perception and image means a lot, and we wanna be very put-together, thorough and professional. And that means not having people walk up and down Lebanon Road all the time. So, that means prohibited from leaving the property on foot.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Let me now open the floor to other members of the public who would like to comment in favor. Is there anyone else who would like to comment in favor?
I'm not opposed.
Okay. Well, come on up.
There's a caveat there, I hear.
I mean, when we were getting the history about when you looked in the, well, first of all, let me say-
Hold on. But before you begin, let me first ask you to do a couple of things. First, state your name and address, please.
My name is D. Todd Littlefield. I live at thirty-four ten Lebanon Road, which is right across the road from, right across Lebanon Road from the subject property.
Okay. And also, if you had raised your right hand, do you swear that the words you're gonna share with us today are the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
When we were listening to a little bit of the history yesterday, there was mention of the fact that there was a previous site. And somewhere in the process, and I don't know exactly where, the decision was made that this is a great idea, find another site. And I'm assuming that the reason for that was that the original site was more residential than this one. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that sort of tells you what you need to know. The only difference between this site and the previous site is that, you know, and I wouldn't go so far as to say I'm the only guy out there, but it's my wife and I. It's a family farm. It's been in the family for just short of a hundred years. And let me also say that she is the principal of the alternative school. So, some of the guys that are gonna be staying out there are in her program right now because, you know, that's the kind of kids that she deals with. And she attended the previous meeting and is supportive, as am I. I have, I have some concerns, and, you know, I don't. It's gonna change the way, the feel. You know, I've been living out there now for twenty, twenty-five years. And for the bulk of that time, I don't lock my doors. That, that comes to a stop now. And that's not, that's not fatal, but it's. I just wanted to. I mean, you don't, you don't have any trouble in understanding my concerns. I looked at the conditions, and it says, no arsonists. Lost it. Anyway, what it's, it lists three different things, no murderers. That's the only mention of violent offenders. There's a whole range of people who come afoul of the law by committing violent offenses. Those are the people I don't really want in my neighborhood. I understand that there's a great need for this. And, you know, I also understand that you've got an RA out there. But, you know, his ability to control traffic in and out of that place is gonna be pretty limited, if for no other reason than he's gotta have time off, right? You know, he's not gonna be, I mean, his, his conditions of employment are not gonna say twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So, I'll just close by saying that, that my wife and I are both cautiously supportive. Like I say, I know that there is a great need for this type of facility. But it is, it's new to you, new to us certainly. And we'd, we'd like to remain in the loop. And we, we rely on you to have our back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Brian Wolford, Boyle County Jail, or eighteen-sixty South Danville Bypass.
And do you hold up your hand, right hand? Do you swear that the words you'll share with us today are the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. And I think he has some valid concerns, and I think I can address those. The men and, or the men that's coming out of jail, they're Boyle County residents. They're already coming back out into our community. So, they're gonna be coming out basically adrift. Nothing's gonna change. What Andrew is providing them is an opportunity for change, some structure in their life. Before, you know, I ran for jail, or retired from the Sheriff's Department. I spent over twenty years in law enforcement. I know prior to going out to look at the house, they were having problems with squatters breaking into the property there and staying there. There, I've gone to calls with suspicious vehicles. There's a barn next to it on the property. Kids, teenagers back there drinking, partying. This is gonna improve that situation. You're gonna have somebody there providing structure, oversight. It's basically gonna push any trouble out. You know, these guys coming out, this is a very important piece to what our community as a whole is trying to do in reference to fighting back against the drug epidemic we're having. You know, it affects every social, economical structure in life, or rung in life. When I was working, I spent the last seven years of my career in law enforcement working undercover. So, I was sworn federally with the DEA, state police. And when I began to realize, dealing with these guys, that most of them didn't grow up with a mom and dad, they got up and went to work every day. Not that there's a perfect family, but what a healthy, they don't know what a healthy family looks like. You know, they were left to fend for themselves at an early age. And like teenagers do, they make poor choices. We've all, everybody in this room was a teenager and made a bad choice at one time. It just so happened their bad choice led them into addiction. And, you know, addiction is a disease. It's a disease of the brain. It actually changes the makeup of the brain, it rewires it. But it can be cured, it can be healed, it can heal itself. But without someone there willing to step in the void and to fill that gap to help these folks, we're gonna continue to deal with them as a community. They're gonna continue to come back to jail. They're gonna continue to drive our numbers up, drive our costs. It's expensive. Incarceration's expensive, and it gets more expensive every day. We have to look at other options to lowering that cost, lowering our recidivism rate, the amount of times they come to jail over and over. I know we just, the county just paid seventy-five dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars to conduct a jail study. I think one gentleman in there, being correct me if I'm wrong, was it thirty or fifty times? It was almost fifty times been to jail. Well, as a community, we're failing this guy by letting him come to jail, put him back out, let him come to jail, put him back out, without offering him some kind of support or help to turn his situation around. So, I don't think, you know, by having, seeing Hearts Ministry out there, is it gonna increase the danger of crime? No, it's not. It'll actually lower any kind of instance like that because they know they're gonna be watched. People are not gonna show up out there because they know there's gonna be cameras. There's gonna be surveillance. There's gonna be Andrew, there's gonna be an RA. And there's gonna be guys there that's wanting to do the right thing, that's not gonna want that around them. So, it's not gonna increase the risk out there. If it does anything, it'll lower it because you're not gonna have, you know, if some kids pull up behind the barn, well, guess what? They're gonna call nine-one-one. You know, if somebody's, a stranger's out driving around somewhere out there, they're gonna call nine-one-one. So, it's actually gonna, I think it'll make, make that area better. Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Jennifer Parton. I'm, my address is four-six-one-four Wolf Spring Drive, Louisville, Kentucky. And I'm the executive director of Prodigal Ministries.
Okay. And hold up your right hand, please. Do you swear that the words you'll share with us today are the truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely. Couple of things. I liked everything you had to say because the truth is, they will be released into the community. Recidivism rate in Kentucky has been as high as forty-three percent. We spend, as taxpayers, it's a, it varies, but I think an average of twenty-seven thousand dollars a year to keep someone incarcerated. So, the beauty of a program like See in Hearts is to make people accountable and to make them taxpayers and so that they're contributing to the community as opposed to taking from the community. Mr. Littlefield, I, we had neighbors next to one of our houses. Well, first of all, let me tell you, our ministry started in nineteen ninety-four. Like Andrew's support, we had two community leaders. One, Robbie Brown, from the Brown Foreman family, and the other, John Shilton, who is, I guess he's our state budget director right now. And they did prison ministry. They met a gentleman who was in prison, and he talked about the revolving door of prison. So, Prodigal initially started as just a mentoring group. And they quickly realized that an hour or two a week was not gonna touch generations of incarceration and drug abuse and addiction and crime. So, we started our first house, and now we have three for men. Two of them are in downtown Louisville. One is in Buckner, Kentucky. And then we have a house for women in Prestwood. We, our occupancy is only at thirty-three beds because, like Andrew knows, you get too many and they're just reincarcerated, and they're just back into a situation like they've come from. So, you want a manageable group. And it will be a fluid occupancy because some people will stay longer than others. I think our average is like seven to nine months if people stay with us. The longer they stay, honestly, the better. The re, for them to, the first ninety days are the most critical. That's when most people re-offend because there is no support, no job. The slam doors, the community is usually against them, so they need an advocate. So, the very best place they can come is to a place that will meet their needs physically, spiritually and emotionally. And that is the program design that See in Hearts is developing. We've, we've been doing that since nineteen ninety-four, and it works. And the thing about a residential facility is there's community accountability and among, among the men who will be living there. We started out with, you know, individuals financially, moved into support from churches, and then individual donors. It started expanding. We have fundraisers. And now, we, we have grants that are written. Initially, it was, they weren't really available. And we also have chosen to not take money from the federal government nor the state government because it's, they, we're faith-based. Plus, it's just a nightmare to account for that. I actually brought our grant writer with us today because I want her to meet with Andrew a little bit later. But so, now we, like, our budget started out pretty, pretty small also. We're at almost a half million dollars a year. It's challenging. I'm jealous of the facility. There's real potential for sustainability here in, in training and developing. The men come usually with tremendous skills. Many of them have construction skills. And again, just some tremendously skilled people who, I have a lady who was, worked for us for a while, and she was the first lady who came to our program before we had our residential house. But she said, "We are not bad people who wanna be good. We're sick people who need to be well." And so, what Andrew is offering through See in Hearts is a place of healing. We had a business next to our residential house in Buckner. And we opened that house in two thousand and eight, and it was a plumbing business. And they, and it was a family business, so they had a wife and daughter-in-laws and whatever working there, and they were scared. They legitimately had concerns because just of the unknown. It wasn't long before they were bringing food over and like providing our men with clothing, and we became really, really good neighbors. We have, maybe it's just God's provision and covering, but we have really been, received well in the community in Oldham County, which isn't much different from Boyle County. Louisville's a little bit different. There's a halfway house on every corner. You know, there are drug houses and lots of things there. They will find drugs in a, in a small community like this that- They will find drugs in a, in a small community like this, that's, I mean, that's just the way, the nature of the disease and where we're living now. But I think what you'll find too, is that we, what we have found is that the churches will send volunteers, and it will transform your community. I've been doing this for twelve years, and I'm not the same person I was twelve years ago, because I was, I didn't know anything about incarceration, I didn't know anything about, you know, what the face of a felon looked like. And now I know that if I had brought two or three in today, you wouldn't be able to tell who was a felon and who was on the planning zoning committee. It's true, I'm telling you. You know, and the concern about the crime rate, we too do not take arsonists because of our insurance, and we also don't take sex offenders because of our location. We do, we do have people who have committed murder, and honestly, oftentimes, they make the very best client, and rehab better than, than someone who might be a persistent felon. So, but the underlying issue of every client, I think, that's come through our program has either been their, their personal addiction or addiction within their family that has been the underlying issue of a crime. We also have really good drug and alcohol counselors, and one of them specializes in male trauma, and even, even the level below addiction is trauma, whether it be abuse, drug use, you know, an accent, whatever. So, they're, they're multiple levels. So, I like what Andrew, Andrew's already years down the road from where we started in addressing the issues, and a lot of it is because he knows. And I think the best person who can run a program like this is someone who really personally knows the need and has the desire. So, at any rate, if there are any questions that you all want to ask me, again, they're going to be released into the community. If you have a supportive community, it will make your community safer.
Okay, thank you. Ah, yes.
Graham Montgomery, Danville Church of God, five sixteen South Fourth Street, here in Danville. I'm also on the board of directors for, with Andrew. I just want to make a...
And just, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear that the words you're going to share with us today are the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I just wanted to make a brief statement that hasn't, hasn't came up. When we met with the community, with, with the neighbors, and Andrew might can address this more efficiently than myself, we agreed to allow one of the neighbors to kind of sit in on our board meetings to have a voice and to know what's going on. And I think that's something we haven't really addressed today, but I thought it might just be a point for you all, that, and Andrew can follow up with that if he wants to, that we were completely open to that as just, just to have a voice in the room to represent the neighbors. And that's all I wanted to say, and I'll let Andrew kind of follow up with that if he wants to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's self-explanatory, that we have a place on our, on our board, a non-voting role on our board. We've identified a person, I don't know if we should name names, or she approached me after our neighborhood meeting and said that she would like to be this person that was welcomed into our board meetings as a, as a non-voting member of our board. So there's a link between the community out there and the residents, and what we're doing in the organization, and what we're doing at the home. So there's the constant flow of communication and that link of, of knowledge about activity and how things are, and what things are happening, and things like that. I don't know if I should mention a name, are people interested in that at this point? Okay. And we're more than happy, we're more than happy to do. The more people involved for us, the better.
Okay. Yes.
Before you sit down, I just have a real quick question, excuse me, out of curiosity. What is the term of the lease with the foundation?
Two years.
Two years.
With an option to renew. And termination for cause of economic development in ninety days, and thirty days for cause, period, like the same as a regular landlord-tenant relationship. If the industrial foundation decides that they're unhappy with us, they have concerns, they've expressed their concerns to us in a professional legal way, and we haven't addressed them properly, they can terminate the lease with cause in thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I will close the floor and ask if there's any discussion among the board? And if not, any motions?
I would move that we approve this application.
Oh, okay. Any conditions or comments on what?
I would like some help from our attorney.
I have some suggestions for the motion that's attached to your packet, some additions to it. You would adopt all of the conditions as listed on page four of your packet, with an amendment to the second condition, which deals with residents leaving property, saying residents are prohibited from leaving property on foot, just to clarify that concern that was raised. To add that the use will not be detrimental to the public because of qualifications and screening for applicants and an onsite resident advisor. I would add also that the board of adjustment is empowered to grant this permit under zoning ordinance section five point two point one. And add also that this permit will not impair the integrity of the surrounding area, because it's a residential use on a larger parcel adjacent to industrial property, and the proposed conditions related to management of the property will help contain any potential detrimental effects.
Does that fit what you had in mind?
That's what I had in mind.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There is no old business or new business that I know of, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're done.